Item eight, municipal code amendments to chapter thirteen point oh eight, parkland dedication and fee, and chapter eighteen point two four, dedications and reservations to clarify parkland dedication and in lieu fee requirements, adoption of the fourth amendment to the 2014 general plan final EIR, and finding the actions are not a project under and exempt from SEQA. Can we have the staff report?
We do. Members of council, thank you for having me. Chad Mosley, city engineer, and as stated, I'm here to present proposed ordinance amendments for the parkland dedications. The city council work program for this year included an item to clarify objective standards. At study sessions regarding objective standards held over the summer and fall, the planning commission and city council recommended making express standards for parkland dedication. We're bringing forth these proposed changes as a first phase of this effort for implementation. The proposed code modifications included the addition of definitions to section thirteen oh eight oh two oh to provide clarity, including the requirement to situate parks at ground level and to dedicate land in fee simple. Modifications were made to establish location and minimum size requirements for parkland dedications. This includes, as was indicated on the last slide, that parkland dedications be located at ground level, also that dedications consist of at least one contiguous piece of land that is a minimum of point two seven acres and is capable of being graded to provide a reasonably flat area of point two five acres. All dedicated land must be at least fifty feet wide and point one acres in contiguous size, and that parks be located adjacent to a street in order to promote public safety and to facilitate policing. Section thirteen oh eight oh three oh was modified to provide further clarity as to the requirement to address parkland demands. Amendments are proposed to consolidate existing exceptions to the parkland dedication requirements, including those that further align the Cupertino municipal code with state laws. The city also continues to waive park dedication fees to incentivize the development of affordable housing, consistent with the city's housing element policies in the BMR procedural manual. And modifications were made to align the timing of dedication and fee payment requirements with existing practices, which is to acquire these items at the time of building permit issuance or recordation of a final map whichever is earliest. Amendments also include express standards for areas that should not be included in or receive credits as part of the computations for Parkland areas. These areas include setbacks, private yards, and open areas required by zoning and/or building code, or for streets and improvements that do not serve the park exclusively. Further clarifications that indicate areas proposed as private open space be accessible to all residents of the project, and further that private open space be developed for park and recreational purposes in order to receive private open space credit. This last item was added to section thirteen oh eight oh eight oh B three and has been provided to you this evening as a desk item.
So when you say accessible to all residents, all residents of the project?
All residents within the development.
Okay, because that's not in the bullet.
All residents within the development.
Okay, great.
Modifications to chapter eighteen point two four, dedication and reservations for subdivisions, are proposed in order to reference and be consistent with chapter thirteen oh eight, the parkland dedication fee. A preliminary draft of the parkland dedication ordinance amendments was presented to the planning commission at a study session at its November twelfth meeting. The commissioners requested that staff consider reducing the parkland dedication credit for significant private open space from a fifty percent credit to a twenty-five percent credit. Staff is not proposing amendments related to private open space credits at this time, but can consider amendments in future phases. The commission wanted staff to consider minimum size and dimension requirements. Staff has proposed amendments to the code to address this input. Public comments at the November twelfth planning commission meeting included a request to consider requiring that covenants be reviewed and approved by the city attorney prior to recordation. Staff has incorporated this amendment. Also, a comment was made to consider disallowing any form of occupancy, including temporary occupancy, prior to recordation of covenants or grant needs for private open space. Staff has proposed an amendment that would require recordation of open space requirements prior to final occupancy, as opposed to the current requirement to record these documents simultaneously with final occupancy. We can discuss this further if you'd like.
Can you, I didn't get the distinction there.
So basically, staff has proposed an amendment that would require recordation of open space covenants prior to final occupancy, as opposed to simultaneously with final occupancy.
Which is what the code currently provides.
Currently, it says simultaneously. We are saying it needs to happen prior, prior to.
Two steps.
Has there been, has there been, been an issue with this?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the distinction could be.
It could be in the same meeting, right? It could be in the same meeting, just one item approving that next item occupancy permit.
Well, occupancy is.
Oh, that's administrative.
It's something that happens, and then, yeah, I'm not sure that it's important. Well, that's my commentary.
It's meant to be simply clarifying, in the sense that simultaneously sounds like has to have an exact same time, and you set up an escrow account or something like that. This is to say that, well, they can actually record it, and then the final occupancy is given.
I think to provide a little, you know, further clarity here, some people were concerned that, you know, not requiring, not requiring the dedication prior to temporary occupancy could be an issue, and staff's point is that prohibiting it from all occupancy before recordation of covenants and grant needs may impose some unnecessary burdens on project implementation. Temporary occupancy is at times issued to facilitate internal improvements by tenants prior to final occupancy, and often may occur simultaneously with the construction of the park improvements. Moving on, the clarifications identified here would not change the less than significant impact analyzed and disclosed in the 2014 general plan final EIR, because the parkland dedication ordinance, as modified, together with the other requirements and policies identified in the final EIR, would still adequately mitigate potential impacts that future development would have on park and recreation services. The proposed amendments do nothing to significantly change the application or effectiveness of the parkland dedication ordinance or other policies. For this reason, the decision by the city council to clarify the parkland dedication standards has no effect on the analysis or conclusions in the final EIR, and will not result in any new impacts not previously identified in the final EIR. Impacts remain less than significant. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
And I will just add to the staff report that we have a desk item before you, which I'll put up over, on the overhead. The highlighted is the additional requirement for private open space to receive a credit for the amount of fees that are given. The, the open space can't just be unprogrammed, it must actually be developed for park and recreational purposes. That was one additional clarification we wanted to make.
Yeah, I requested that because I was concerned that someone could claim a rooftop without any facility as a private open space. But then, if they develop that as a basketball or tennis court on the rooftop, then that's fine. So, that's.
And the overhead has one additional desk item, if the video people can show that. Yes, so this is the additional language that was added to the prior item. This is section three, just again, the standard language to provide that if amendments are the same as what was there before, it's a continuation and not, not amendment or changing those, read adaption of those provisions.
So I thought this is saying that the parkland needs to be at ground level.
That clarification was for private open space, not for publicly dedicated.
Okay, so a rooftop basketball court wouldn't qualify?
Wouldn't qualify for the public park.
For the public, but it would qualify for private?
It, yes.
They would get the fifty percent credit?
Assuming they've provided enough private open space.
Right, okay. All right, I guess before we bring it back to council, let's, let's do the public comment, unless someone has some question on the presentation.
I have a really quick clarifying question. Under the red line of the municipal code amendments, table thirteen dot oh eight dot oh eight oh, this is just very, very clarifying, under optional elements, swim pool has been modified and swim has been crossed out in favor of accessible swimming. So what's the difference between swim pool and accessible swimming pool?
Accessibility, meaning that an accessible pool is ADA compliant.
ADA, okay. So that's it? It's just a matter of being able to?
That is correct.
Accommodate the ADA requirements? Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I have a question too. So that means they are required to make that ADA compliant? If they don't make that ADA compliant, then it's not allowed?
If it's not ADA compliant, they would not receive?
Credits.
Private open space credit for that.
Right, they could do a non.
They could do it, but then they cannot get the credit.
That is correct.
That's, so accessible swimming pool is defined some?
I believe it's the building code.
It's in the building code, okay.
Okay, I have three cards, Jean Bedord, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Janet Van Zorin. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, and congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor. I am here to speak for, to read a letter which was submitted to the council as well as the mayor, to bring your awareness to their position with regard to parkland. Dear Mayor and council members, Cupertino for All supports a more sustainable, equitable, and vibrant community. To that end, we want to express our gratitude to staff for maintaining the current calculation method that determines parkland dedication in lieu fees. The previously proposed shift to the U.S. Census Bureau data for average household size would have placed a disproportionate burden on smaller, more economic, and more environmentally sustainable multifamily developments, which would have discouraged these types of developments. Such a move would have further underscored Cupertino's reputation as an exclusive community, antagonistic toward housing, and new, more diverse residents. As the staff report notes, the potential to consider this topic in the future, we encourage this council to consider ways to equitably distribute the burden of park in lieu fees. Thank you for removing that. We also observe the proposed change to require all dedicated parkland to be at ground level and dedicated in fee simple. As only one property owner in the history of Cupertino has attempted to build a park above ground level, we hope this move is motivated by legitimate public policy reasons and not by animosity toward Valco. Given the stated desire to increase the availability of public parks, our municipal code should be seeking means to favor parks of all descriptions, including innovative use of air rights, without further burdening new housing with excessive parkland requirements. And this is signed by Marie for Cupertino for All. Stepping back from my own perspective, I urge this council to step back from this and follow the example of Sunnyvale, which is working actively with their developer to look at the trade-offs between building heights and ground-level parks. It will be, this type of restriction can discourage smaller developers outside of the Valco development to submit innovative solutions to provide parklands in their developments. I think you need to rethink this particular ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Janet Van Zorin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. Having been a resident of eastern Cupertino where there are little or no parks, I think that we need to make sure that we get every ounce of land from these greedy developers, a lot of them that are being promoted by the CASA compact and these horrendous housing bills that are coming from the state level, and they are, there is proof that they are all running in sync with HB two oh oh one in Oregon and in Austin and in Seattle. We aren't fooled anymore. I want parks on the ground that are owned by Cupertino lock, stock, and barrel for every generation to come. I don't want parks in the air on buildings that could fall down in earthquakes. If the city owns the land, it's there through pestilence, earthquakes, floods, et cetera. Okay, let me take an example. We have now, because we were blessed having eighty, sixty-eight and sixty-nine passed by our wonderful Sacramento, who don't appear to be very bright, my neighborhood has two apartment complexes adjacent that are in San Jose, Shadow Oaks and Sage Fountains. Also, there's Archstone Cupertino. They are in the limits of San Jose. But currently, all of those people, those residents, six hundred households, will be sharing the parks in Rancho Rincanata, which are nonexistent. So if you stuff ADUs in those apartment complexes, or they can be redeveloped under brilliant San Jose's urban village scenario, my neighborhood is not only going to be park deficit, we're going to be providing parkland for all of these park deficit apartment complexes in San Jose. Yes, we provide parkland for those nice people now, but it is going to get worse. If you stuff, if you allow developers to stuff ADUs in apartment complexes, they, of course, by these housing laws, are not going to be required to provide adequate parkland. The intent of these housing laws is land grab. It is not affordable housing. It is so apparent now. They don't care about parkland for people. We do. We live in the eastern. We are trying hard to get our parks, but I don't want to share my parks with an extra fifteen hundred people in these apartment complexes, which is what these housing bills are trying to do. We have to push back. It is beginning in Oregon, and it will begin here, and I begin it now. We have to have pushback.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
Parks on the ground, and get every inch of it. Thank you.
Next, we have Janet Van Zorin, and that's the last card I have. Welcome, Janet.
Good evening, city council. Congratulations, mayor and vice mayor. It's nice to be back here again, speak to you guys. I don't know much about this topic that has just come up, but a thought came to my mind while you were discussing the various aspects of it, and that is that Cupertino is, most people don't even know this yet, but Cupertino is an age-friendly city, and I would like to see eventually that more be done for those of older age in this city. I'd love to see some park benches here and there along the sidewalks. I'd love to see a picnic table in a, in a little place where there just happens to be a little extra land that is between the, the road and the sidewalk or adjacent to it. And that, those would be little gathering places where people could sit down for a rest, or sit down and meet a neighbor now and then. At any rate, I don't know how that affects, or if it affects any of your planning, but if we were to have some park benches sprinkled here and there, or a picnic table here and there, would that be considered parkland? And if it was considered parkland, are you doing something tonight that would make it impossible to do that later on? The other question I have is with regard to having all the parkland be ground level. You know, unfortunately, we're, we are in an area where population is growing, and there's more housing being developed, and we're seeing less and less of the mountains around us that were so beautiful that we had such scenery before. I would love to see on some of the buildings that get built, a little bit of green space up on the roof with a park bench, or a picnic table, or maybe even a, what do they call it, bossy ball or something, where people could go and, and enjoy the scenery and enjoy spending a little time with a friend. Those are just some thoughts to consider as you're working on these plans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that's all the cards I have, so we can bring it back to council for discussion. We'll start at the left as usual. John, do you have anything?
So a couple of comments. So I, I am very sensitive to the comments from the residents, and being open to creative park space. So we're up here to truly represent the residents, to represent what the residents of the community support and don't support, what they want, what they don't want. And to me, that's very different than having developers claim that these things suffice for park space, without the residents being able to decide for themselves if it is or isn't acceptable. And so I, I think we have to put in place the, the checks and balances, the, the requirements, so that the residents aren't going to be taken advantage of. Developers can always ask. They can always ask for more height, they can always ask for more density, they can always ask for, hey, can I put, you know, some of this open space, like at a shopping center, up on the, on the second floor, and that be considered, you know, open space? And as we look to the community for their support, and if they say yes, that is something that we consider to be sufficient, then we vote for it. But again, be, having something put in front of us that we have no discretion over is, unfortunately, the predicament that we're in with the one project. And so I think we really do have to make sure that we put these, these requirements in, and I will actually be one of the first ones to say, when, if a developer wants to propose something creative, I'll come and listen. And then I will do everything I can to take those ideas back, show them to the community, and if they support it, then I have to support it. It's not what I, as an individual, would decide yes or no, it's what the community. And so to me, I, I really want to say that we need to, to distinguish what it is we, we need to do versus it being interpreted that we're gonna block things that would potentially be possible, because they, they are still possible, and they, they would be right for the community. So, so I, I see what we've done here. I think it's really great. I want to say thank you to staff for going into such great detail, right down to swimming pools versus accessible pools, and the amount of credit that would be given for the different types of, of parks and stuff. So I think what we've got, I, I'm pretty good with it, so I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Council member Chow.
Okay. Hi. So I do think that in the future, there will be more rooftop parks. However, we need to define standards, the minimum standards for rooftop park, because it's expensive to build, it's expensive to maintain. If it's not built well, well, it might become deserted. And I went to the Facebook rooftop park. For a two-story building, they build enough strength for a seven-story building in order to withhold all the, the weight of the soil when it's wet. So I think for us to consider rooftop park as a real parkland, we should consider that, but that's under the condition we have specific objective standard on the quality of the rooftop park, and who will be maintaining it. And, yeah, so in the future. And then I have a question about, I think for the private open space, we also say it should be accessible to all residents in the development. Here, accessible, does that mean ADA accessible, or just accessible?
In this case, they just need to be able to access it.
So they won't have to be ADA accessible? Shouldn't we require that?
I mean, I think building codes would require ADA accessibility, so.
So.
It would be.
Here, accessible would mean ADA accessible, in order to get the credit?
It would be as defined in the building code, but I'm pretty sure that means ADA accessible, yes.
Okay. So for parkland, public parkland, it should be accessible to all residents? That's also ADA accessible, right?
Are we talking about the public?
Public parkland.
Yeah, I mean, I think we are required by state law to provide accessible facilities.
So the playground should all be ADA accessible? Just want to confirm that.
I'm, I'm not sure if we're talking about like an all-inclusive playground here or not. I don't think that's necessarily the case, but.
Regular playground shouldn't, shouldn't the regular playground also be ADA accessible?
We do provide accessibility to the playgrounds, yes.
That's required in, under current building code?
I'm not sure if that's a building code or, or state law, but we build parks to be accessible, yes.
Okay, so whoever proposed the project, maybe it's streamlined, they will have to provide ADA accessible parks, private open space, and facilities, right?
That is correct.
Okay, good. And for, can you go to the, the fourth page in your slide? So proposed modification for, yeah, this one, and the, the other one. Yeah, this one. So requirement for dedication. I have similar question for this one, and also for the requirement for the zero point five acre requirement for, I think for the private open space. So here, we say it's at least one point two eight acre contiguous land, and minimum fifty feet wide. Point one acre for any dedication. How come we have two numbers here?
I think I understand your question. The first number there is for any parkland dedication, there must be at least one contiguous piece of land that is point two seven acres in size. In certain cases, if a development is required to, say, provide three point seven acres, they could have a second, potentially smaller park that's point one acres, at a different location. This is to facilitate the potential for pocket parks or smaller parks, and to kind of be able to provide some flexibility to developers, to provide open space at different, different areas and within a development.
Okay. Good. And then there is also, under the private open space, in order to get the credit, they should provide point five acre of turf, the playfield. Okay, so similar question as this is, we, I think we, you do have a requirement that it needs to be, the slope should be at most ten percent, which is good, but then I'm concerned that they can provide something like this, contiguous? So how do we make sure it's, they can say we dedicate this to the city? It has to acreage? Can we say it has to be rectangular, or?
These standards here are for private open space, if you look at.
This is park dedication, right? This is park dedication, right?
You're talking about this table 1308080? These are mandatory and optional elements for private open space?
I have the same question for both, for the tables 1308080 and this one. So, that's private open space. This is the public dedication. The same question, if we only specify contiguous land and with the minimum acreage, how do we prevent someone by saying, this is your contiguous, this is your turf area, or this is your contiguous land?
Yeah, I mean, we do have the requirement for a 50-foot wide area, minimum.
So, this 50 feet wide applies to that?
It could theoretically apply to this.
So, 50 feet wide, is that good for soccer field?
It may not be good for a soccer field, but should be adequate for potentially a tot lot, other facilities along those lines, benches, picnic tables, as were mentioned earlier by the public. You can definitely have, I mean, a 50-foot wide strip of land is as wide as most residential properties.
Most residential properties?
Yeah, I think most of the residential lots in Rancho Rincón are 51 to 52 feet wide.
So, like point two eight acre is about one residential lot?
It really depends if we're talking, again, lots in Rancho Rincón, a point two seven acres is about 2.7 lots. Most of the lots in Rancho Rincón are about point one acre.
So, I'm just trying to decide, so if it's minimum 50 feet wide and with point two seven acre, that would be, I mean, it would be a good rectangular size.
That's correct. Consider a soccer field or a football field being about an acre in size, point two seven acres, about a quarter of a football field, so a fairly large sized lot.
Okay, so can they do this 50 feet wide and then a very narrow one? Here, I mean, this is what we have in Main Street, a park and this. This is 50 feet.
This is one reason we're adding this 50-foot minimum width dimension. I mean.
So, it's 50 feet here?
If this is not 50 feet, we will not accept that.
So, it needs to be 50 feet across everywhere. Is that clear from the code? I'm not sure. I'm trying to be in detail, because if a project is streamlined and right now a common person can interpret our code and say, this is my understanding.
We could add an amendment that says all dedicated land must be at least 50 feet wide at all locations? If that would help.
I think to a certain extent, to a certain extent, it does state all dedicated land must be at least 50 feet wide. So, if they're dedicating this section, it's got to be 50 feet wide.
But they are saying we dedicate this section, this is 50 feet wide?
This is 50 feet, but this is not 50 feet.
But you didn't say how long it had to be. What about the diagonal?
I think we do need to make it.
That's not wide, that's diagonal.
I just want to prevent.
Perfectly clear.
Potential few legal challenges.
Could I put something up? Could I please have the white overhead again? Would that be an acceptable clarification to address your concern? That says at all locations.
I think so. And then also for the tables 13.08.
How about as measured in any?
At all locations doesn't sound right, but yeah. At any.
As measured in all dimensions.
In all dimensions.
In all, yeah. I'm trying to help.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, you might want to think about height as well.
Yeah, okay.
It's true, it could be covered up.
And also for.
So, is in all dimensions better than? Do you have language, Chad?
Yeah, human language is not very precise, so it's very hard to be objective. Can you also put on the table, this table, for the mandatory and optional element?
Do we have them?
Okay, so here, it's great that we have a mandatory element for private open space for turf, the playfield. And we have a minimum acreage, but then again, there is no objective description so that it's something that's really, we can play ball. So, shouldn't we maybe also say 50 feet wide?
I mean, that is, that is indicated in that same section.
Oh.
I mean, am I correct?
For the private?
Isn't that same section?
I don't know whether playfield has any building code definition already.
Right, we don't want half an acre that's like 10 feet wide and very long to qualify.
Again, these are private open space. This is not public open space, so these are a requirement of the developer.
It does say and free of physical barriers which would inhibit group play activities, so.
Is this objective?
I think so.
Can someone say, okay, this is point five acre, and you can have good play?
Do you have a proposed amendment you'd like to make here?
I think we can put a similar requirement as the public, 50 feet wide, which is only as wide as a single family lot, right? It's not very wide, but that's a very minimum standard.
Yeah, 50 feet may be too much for private.
But this is point five acre, though. The other was only point two eight.
Yeah.
So, if that's 50 feet makes sense, this should make sense.
I mean, I'm just thinking of a long, narrow apartment building where maybe you couldn't get to 50 feet if it was up on a, up in the air.
This is only if they want to claim the credit. If they don't.
Right, yeah, if they don't want to claim the credit, they can do whatever they want. Yeah, yeah, that's an excellent, that's an excellent point.
Since they want to claim park space credit, at least to have, to be able to serve the functions of park space.
Right, yeah, I agree with you, that's true. So, yeah, I do agree with you.
I think the one comment that I would make, though, is kind of like what I was saying earlier. They can ask for, at least I'm thinking, they can ask for whatever they want. Hey, my lot happens to be this long and only that wide, and so, trying to put, you know, the required rectangle into it really makes it not very useful, but if I were to do something like this particular shape, will you accept it? Then, we, the city council, have the opportunity to say, hmm, this looks like an acceptable creative way to make something that's going to work. You know, I just don't see these numbers being unchangeable by the city council when the project gets proposed. It sets the rules for the developer to know, oh, I essentially need point five acres for open space, and then if he does feel, you know, there's a better way, a better way for the community, it's a win-win situation, then we have the opportunity to grant that. So, I don't think I would get too hung up on it if we were.
And just to clarify, the opportunity to grant it would be through an amendment to the, to these standards of the municipal.
But then they can ask as an exception.
And there could be density bonus exceptions.
Right. So, I would agree with Councilmember Chow, we should have something in there, and the 50 feet is fine for this as well.
Would that be?
Right, yeah, just make it the same.
What about the direction issue with dimensions?
I think we have yet to come up with language for that.
Shall we indicate in any horizontal dimension?
Let's do that, yeah. Let's call it in any horizontal dimension.
Shall we 50 feet wide in any horizontal dimension?
How do you define horizontal versus vertical, though?
We can pull out the Webster's dictionary, but I think.
Yeah, we're thinking of slopes, too. Well, they can't be more than a 10% slope, okay. Anything else, council member?
I'll have one more point, I'll do that later, so.
Okay, so.
Why not do it now?
As far as rooftop parks, not totally opposed to it, but I remember attending a San Jose City Council meeting when they approved an 18-story building with a rooftop park and, you know, that would be accessible, a public park accessible by elevator at certain, certain time periods, and I thought, wow, that's not, you know, they're calling it a public park, I would not really call it that, because very, people are highly unlikely to drive their park, take the elevator to the roof and use it. Now, on the other hand, you do have the Salesforce Center in San Francisco, which has a large rooftop park, which was partially the cause of the problems they experienced, the support of the building was not sufficient for the weight of that rooftop park, which resulted in some costly retrofit. So, I think we have to be really careful about public rooftop parks and the construction. So, it should be more of an exception than the rule. I was interested in the proposal by the Planning Commission to reduce from 50% credit to 25% credit for private open space and why, what the feeling was of why that wasn't a good idea.
The modification from 50 to 25% could have been considered an additional burden on developers who may be proposing this, and we're trying to just address objective standards here today, and we're not trying to modify code sections that may have further burdens on developers.
And just, I would say further that we just felt like we wanted to study it more, like what?
Right.
We included, I think, some information, the staff report that other cities we've surveyed do have a 50% reduction, and I think I'd want to look at what are the, like, what is the expectations of how much people with private open space do or don't use public parks such that.
Right.
The impact would be reduced by that much.
So, how much of the public open space can they get out of providing by providing private open space at the 50% level?
As long as they're providing onsite private open space that meets their park dedication requirement area, they can get up to 50% credit. So, basically, they, if they were required to construct an acre of public parkland, they would need to provide an acre of private open space onsite.
Plus a half acre.
And then they would thus have to provide the city with half an acre of public parkland or half of the parking fees.
Right, so they can't just say, I'm providing 100%, 200% in private and that satisfies 100%.
That is correct. It's a 50% maximum.
Max cap, okay. Okay, very good, that's all I have. Vice Mayor Paul?
I have no comments. I'm supportive of the proposed, the proposed statute and modifications thereof, as well as what Councilmember Chow was describing, as some refinements with regard to description of the spaces.
Okay, Councilmember Sinks?
Yeah, I'm, I think that, given that we're built out and given that we're trying to be encouraging of constructing housing, I do think that elevated parks that aren't at ground level ought to be allowed. And I'll show you a couple of examples here. I'm going to go back to that same projector that our city attorney's been using. Just flip through a couple of these before I come back to the microphone, so if you could bear with me. This is Highline Park in New York, fairly narrow, right?
Right.
A lot of plants. And yes, this is. This one is the park on top of the Trans Bay Terminal. I find these, these spaces beautiful, wonderful, right? There are a whole bunch of folks, and you can say, well, this is for urban places, but we do have some urban places in our city. And I, for one, think that in the, in the case where, you know, we get a dedication on the ground and we think it's appropriate to control that, it's something we can deal with, fairly conventional, I like the fee simple arrangement that's been proposed. I like the idea that the city would get to own it, maintain it, and so forth. For these more challenging structures, Stephen, you mentioned it, right? Yeah, there's weight involved, and there are other things. I do think there ought to be requirements, right, to make sure these things are maintained over time, but I would, I would think it appropriate for the city to say, okay, to the developer, you're doing something that's expensive and a bit unorthodox, at least by our standards for now. We don't really want to own maintenance of this thing, but here are requirements for you to do so, and under those conditions, I would allow rooftop, because I think, you know, here are real examples of how it's being done effectively to connect places in the case of the, of the, the thing in New York City and here, yes, on a great big transit center. So, our scale is likely to be smaller, but I think there are, there are places for this, and I think we ought to consider them if they are proposed. So, that's where I'm at.
So, both your examples there, the Highline in New York City and the Salesforce Transit Center, those are both public buildings. And I think that's okay. The issue I have is when.
These are, these are. These are public spaces rather than private spaces.
Right, they're not on top of an apartment building, and that's, I mean, that's what I have a problem with. You know, the proposal on San Jose at the Volar, Winchester, is, yes, it's called public, but it would be highly unlikely for the public to really bother to use it.
Yeah, no, I mean, if we cited a couple of examples in our city, in an all-housing project like, you know, Irvine's proposal for the Hamptons, it's, whether or not it's actually public, it's unlikely to be used by the public. Whereas, on a mixed-use project, you know, where you have retail, at least some retail and entertainment that draws a more general crowd, I expect that it might be, right? So, I would expect, you know, in Minneapolis, where I grew up, there's, it's not park space exactly, but because it's really cold and snowy in the wintertime, the city, a generation ago, started building skyways on the second story to connect the buildings, and it's actually a great experience to go from building to building and to building without having to go outside and walk, get your feet wet and all those.
Yes, I've been in the hamster tubes in Minneapolis.
It's great, it's, it's really fun, and it's a, it's a great environment and well-appreciated by folks in the wintertime. So, I think, you know, considering giving some consideration to here, more appropriately outdoor spaces that are elevated, I think, you know, these are examples of how it is done well and incorporated into, yeah, places where people are going to go.
So, I mean, as Councilmember Willie pointed out, we do have the ability, if a property owner came forward with a non-ground level park or open space that we thought was acceptable, we could. we could, you know, we could get that...
You could change the rules for one project?
Right, we could change the rules on a per-project basis. There's just a fear of blanketly allowing this and having, having things happen that we would prefer not to.
And even if we provide exception for one project in the future, I hope we would still consider objective standard on what's required for rooftop park, so that it will be a sustainable rooftop park, and financially, who will be accountable for maintaining it?
And just to be clear, that you would have to amend the municipal code to allow that?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be an exception for the project, unless, right, or a code amendment, unless there was, you know, definitely bonus waivers.
Yeah, but we're not looking at hundreds of these coming forward.
Oh, wait, so the city actually has the option to allow them to do land dedication or not, right? So, they can choose even not to dedicate land and just pay the fee?
That's right.
So, they always have the option?
The city, it's the city's discretion to determine whether dedication's required versus paying a fee.
My concern about amending the municipal code for one project, and then, okay, changing it back again, is, you know, we could be subject to litigation by people that think we're granting a special favor. So, I mean, my argument would be, let's change the code, put in, as Liang is suggesting, right, the rules to make sure that it's done well, to technical standards, but not prohibited.
I'm sorry, I don't read it as the city deciding. Under thirteen dot oh eight dot oh six oh, fees in lieu of parkland dedication, we've changed language to make it seem, it seems very clear. Under subsection A two, subdivisions, and I quote, "Subdivisions containing fifty units or less shall be, shall pay a fee in lieu of parkland dedication." Am I reading that incorrectly, or...
You are correct. State law dictates that any development that's under fifty units, the city cannot require a dedication.
For subdivisions.
For subdivisions, yeah.
Okay, but anything over fifty, are you saying we can still allow a fee as opposed to dedication? Because the way I'm reading this...
At council's discretion. So, I would direct your attention to section thirteen oh eight zero three zero.
Okay.
Thirteen oh eight what?
Zero three zero.
Of the proposed amendments.
The city has the discretion to determine which of the three options above shall be required.
Or a combination of both, right?
So, it says developments must address fee increased demands for parks through parkland dedication, a payment of fee in lieu thereof, or a combination of both. And then the city has the discretion which of those three options shall be required.
So, could a property owner subdivide their property into multiple parcels, and then build fifty units or less on each parcel to get out of the parkland dedication?
If we get to that situation, we'll have to figure that one out, I think. I find that highly unlikely that that's going to happen, but theoretically, if they were to subdivide a parcel into two lots, and then go and subdivide those further, we would probably have certain requirements for that first subdivision, but beyond that, we would probably just be stuck getting a fee.
But wouldn't, if they build a townhome that's all condos, and that's all for sale townhomes, wouldn't that, each one would be a parcel, and you have one unit per parcel? Like, what's, are we saying they are considered...
Right, how does that work with condos?
We're simply trying to conform to state law here, so there might, what you're asking is some interpretation of the Subdivision Map Act, which I'm not, don't have right off the tip of my tongue here, so, and there is an exception in the language regarding limiting subdivisions of fifty or less, as provided in government code six six four seven seven A, which is in the Subdivision Map Act, and some of that addresses townhomes, so I'd have to go back and look at that. I think the simple answer to your question is we're just trying to conform to state law here, and so, we could come up with lots of scenarios, and I think...
Okay, but I guess we still want to know what the state law requires here.
And I don't have that at the top of my...
Yeah, I mean, if you build fifty condos, each with their own accessory parcel number, technically...
Yeah, my understanding is state code is condominiums are subject to this, because condominiums are a subdivision. They may be an air subdivision, but they are subject to the fifty units requirement.
Okay, thank you.
So, they are not required to dedicate land?
No, they are.
They would be if it's fifty acres or more. I'm sorry, fifty units or more, I apologize.
Wait, but condos are, each unit is one subdivision?
Right, but he's saying it's still required.
But if you have, if you have a building that has fifty condos or more, that is a subdivision of fifty units, and is thus subject to the park dedication requirements.
It's a subdivision of fifty units, not each condo is a subdivision, a parcel by itself?
So, with respect to the Subdivision Map Act and condominiumization of final maps, a final map will dictate the number of condos that are permitted on a property. So, you'll see a condo map that says, or a final map that says, "Final map for condominium purposes," and then it will dictate two-hundred-and-four condominiums. And at that point in time, you're dictating the number of subdivisions on that site. If it's over fifty, then it's subject to the, to these dedication requirements.
But, for example, VAALCO SB thirty-five requests twenty-four hundred subdivisions, right?
Correct.
So, how is...
So, that would be over fifty, and they're subject to the park dedication requirements.
So, that's still subject to...
That is correct.
Well, how does that fit into, I mean, I didn't really want to delve into this, I thought about this probably half an hour ago, but, I mean, but how does that fit into the partialization equation? What if, I mean, just for the sake of this, since we're going down this, you know, route, what if, what if it was parceled into a hundred different parcels? I mean, what happens then? And each of the parcels has less than fifty units?
I mean, we're getting into a hundred different parcels, which is a hundred different units, and so you get them right off the bat, and then as they parcelize each of those further, you get them, you know, for additional units. I mean, we're getting into some nuanced territory here, and we'd probably want to get a surveyor on board to verify some of these things.
I'm just asking, you know, if you had...
But, yeah, I mean, if, let's say you had, you parcelized it into ten units, and then each one of them was forty-nine.
Right.
I mean, you're typically trying to subdivide parcels, you'll do a subdivision of the ten parcels with one map, as opposed to piecemealing the map into a bunch of different ones. But theoretically, that's an option.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't want to make any roadmaps either. I mean, so, can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a sort of, so, going back to this whole applicability section that the city attorney pointed out, I'm a little bit confused with regard to this last sentence, where it states, "The city has the discretion to determine which of the three options above shall be required." So, that then becomes a discretionary determination, apparently, right? And then, with regard to the city, I mean, is that the city staff, is that city council? I mean, you said city council, but, I mean, that's not really clear from the face of...
Yeah, and I would direct your attention to the general procedures section, which is found, sorry, hang on a second, section thirteen oh eight one hundred. Let's see, where did it go? So, A says, "At the time of approval of a dwelling units, the approval authority shall determine whether a parkland dedication, a fee in lieu thereof, or a combination both is required."
Yeah, that doesn't really give me a whole lot of clarity there.
Well, it depends on who the approval authority is, so different kinds of projects are either approved by the Planning Commission, or the city council, or sometimes the development director. So, this is just saying that whoever's issuing the permit for the project is the one who determines whether it's a fee or parkland dedication. And if it's a large project, then that would probably be the city council.
Okay, and then, what does the discretionary aspect of that do to our discussion here in terms, in the face of, you know, various state laws that would take away...
Well, so, the intent was to, the first amendment was to say, look, this is, addressing the increased demands of parkland is an objective standard. You have to do it one of three ways. In a, in a project that the city approves, the city has the discretion. In an SB thirty-five project, the developer would say, "This is the way it's being addressed." But it's, but if either way it's addressed, it has to meet the standards in this code. So, this code is beefing up the standards. If it's going to be a dedication, it has to be this. If it's a fee, well, the fee would apply.
Okay, so, under, for example, for the sake of the example, under an SB thirty-five project, the developer could decide whether they're going to go with the in lieu fee, the dedication, or some combination of the two?
That's right, but whatever their proposal is, has to meet the stand, the objective standards set in this, in this code section for the fees or the dedicated land.
Okay.
So, it has to be a minimum size, for instance, that sort of thing.
If they go with the dedication, if they go with the fee, then that's a pretty straightforward calculation.
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right, yeah, that was my question. So, it does have, there is an effect, and there's no way we can kind of narrow that down with regard to more definitiveness, because, you know, in my earlier read of thirteen dot oh eight oh sixty, it really, I mean, it really does look like this is defining when you have fees in lieu of parkland dedication, because that's literally what it says. Fees in lieu of parkland dedication, Romanate A, Roman numeral, Roman numeral, letter A, general standard, and then you go and, you know, it's just very confusing.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a qualification on the city's discretion, that it still has to comply with state law when it's choosing when you pay fees or dedication, and state law says for subdivisions under fifty units, you can't require dedication. So, this is reflecting that standard.
Okay, okay. I guess, I guess that's clear enough, I mean, now that we've made that...
And I would say that the section zero three zero says, you know, "In the time and according to the standards and formulas provided in this chapter," and so I think that qualification to, you know, well, that incorporates the state law standard into that applicability section that you were looking at.
Right, I mean, ultimately, if the developer doesn't want to dedicate over the land, then we could be having a very vigorous conversation with regard to whether they can pay the in lieu fee. And then, if there's some kind of invocation of a preemptive law that takes away our discretionary ability, you know, insofar as choosing between the different types is concerned, then we really wouldn't have a choice there, I guess. But with regard to trying to be able to, trying to be able to state, you know, you have a potential, you know, alternative option for providing some kind of open space, I mean, I think, I think it makes more sense to give us more of the discretion within the municipal code and say that, "Look, it's either going to be a fee, or it's going to be a dedication of space." And what I'm hearing from you, city attorney, is that we're going to need to make a municipal code change as opposed to simply allowing for a general plan amendment if we encounter something like, you know, a very substantial rooftop park in the future, you know, based upon what we're looking at here.
Yeah, and I thought, Councilmember Chow put it well, that at that time, maybe we would add objective standards to the code that would say, "We will allow rooftop parks under these conditions," or something like that.
Right, right.
So, I think that might be the amendments you would make at that time.
Right, in the future.
I don't think we're prepared yet to create standards for rooftop parks, including, I mean, should they be allowed on a twenty-story building, or, you know, only a three-story building?
Right.
And the requirements in terms of the construction standards, which I don't think any of us here are qualified to specify.
Well, I mean, I'd be more concerned about it if there wasn't this apparent, you know, out with regard to paying the fee. It's, in one sense, it's a little bit more porous than I'd prefer, but in another, it does give some options, especially in light of the current legislative balance here. So, can I put forward some language for motion, or are we still adding potential elements to the...
No, I mean, I do think that, you know, they still get fifty percent credit for a rooftop park for private open space.
Right.
Now, in the future, maybe we come up with something, "Okay, if you want to do a rooftop park and make it public, then we'll give you seventy-five percent credit." Maybe not a hundred, we don't want to encourage rooftop parks, we don't want to prohibit them either.
Yeah, I mean, I can't think of a more definitive way to open the door to it at this point, so, I mean, I would just be in support of what we've discussed.
Right, if not, does anyone else?
I have one more thing to point out. So, can you show this table for parkland dedication formula table?
What table number is it?
Table thirteen point oh eight point oh five oh, yeah, this one. So, this is how we are calculating the amount of parkland we require. This...
No.
Right?
Or, I'm sorry.
Parkland dedication we require.
That is correct, yeah.
Right?
Sorry.
So, we are required, it's according to the number of units per acre. It doesn't matter how big is, are the units. So, if we had, like, twenty studio apartments, they would have to provide one, they would count one point eight people, but then if we had twenty penthouse, four-bedroom penthouse, they would account, they would only need to account for one point eight people per unit also. That doesn't seem to make sense, so I'm wondering, does other cities also use this kind of standard by density, by units per acre, not by number of bedrooms or size of units?
So, a number of cities use very similar density formulas as this one, and in fact, I think Sunnyvale's is exactly the same. I think Santa Clara's is very similar. There are a couple that have swapped over to the Federal Census Bureau for the number of people per household, which does have an effect on the overall park dedication fee requirements, and just say park dedication requirements. Staff believes that this needs to be studied a little more thoroughly before we go and make modifications here, because it does have an impact to the dedication requirements of developers, and could potentially be an extremely heavy burden to them.
Yeah, so, I think using census numbers overall doesn't make sense, because I think we need to distinguish between studio unit and four-bedroom penthouse in a multi-unit development. And, yeah, we don't want to penalize development, however, if someone is building luxurious apartment, really big units, we do want to get sufficient amount of parkland dedication for their residence.
Yeah, as indicated, we would need to provide, we would need to do further study on that. We would probably have a nexus study for this item.
And I don't know about other cities. It seems that our city has thirty-five units per acre, seventy-five units per acre, so this seems to be pretty outdated. It only goes up to twenty units per acre, so...
And I will say that the council will be considering various potential municipal code change items as part of its work program for the next year, and this could be something that's thrown in the mix.
Yes, so, as our city are considering higher-density development, our parkland dedication table needs to kind of match our current or future density.
So, why does this table, in two cases, have two lines that are the same? Why... Why isn't it one for five to twenty and one for?
Yeah, it's weird.
Yeah, that's a question for when they initially enacted this, twenty-some years ago. I could not find a staff report on it. I, I don't know. I just left the table alone in case there was a specific reason. I did not want to go modifying the table, because it does have potentially impacts to-
And may I suggest that if we want to have further discussion about this, we, you know, think about bringing it back as the-
Right, yeah.
This conflict, these two conflict with each other. If you had fifteen units, which one do you go by?
I think there probably is a lot to say and study and consider here, and I think it's, you know, it's basically a whole other work program item to-
No, I know, but-
No, yeah, the conflict is a good point. I mean, I would-
Ten to twenty does overlap with ten plus. I mean, that's, that's absolutely correct. I mean, those two numbers you're circling actually cover the same range.
Yeah, so which is it if you're at fifteen? Is it two, or is it one point eight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could scratch the ten plus.
Well, no, I mean, but, I mean, if it's been like this for, for decades, how, of course you would choose the smaller number.
It, it honestly looks like the ten plus shouldn't be there, right? Because you have the zero to five, five to ten, ten to twenty, and then you have twenty plus. Then, then you have this bizarre-
I think originally the ten plus was to be applied towards apartments, but it's, I think that may have been lost in-
It, it feels to me like that line is conflicting with the rest of the table.
Yes, that should be struck.
That's a good point.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Chow.
So, so, so just, I mean, for the future, I, I'd be willing to request a future nexus study tied to square footage of units, or number of bedrooms, or some other metric tied to the size of the units. I, I mean, I think we can't, we can't really adjust it tonight other than you very rightly pointing out that this is just a, it's a flawed table as it is, right?
And, and we could say that, we could make this change tonight if the city council determines, and it, city council's ultimately the one that interprets the meaning of the municipal code. And to the extent that you say that this ten plus was not intended to be a, a separate calculation, and the city hasn't interpreted that way, I would be comfortable if you wanted to strike that line tonight.
Because it's such an obvious area.
Right, because it's a typographical area, error, there's no distinction.
Maybe it was supposed to be a hundred, or who knows?
Yeah, but I think we should bring it back in the future, not this, but to look at going to the Census, um-
We need some study on this.
Because it is true, it should be related to the number of people per unit, logically.
The number of bedrooms.
Right, the number of bed, yeah, do it by bedrooms, or square feet, or however, yeah, maybe square feet, because people could, you know, we have the issue of a, oh, area that's not officially a bedroom but used as a bedroom. So you wouldn't want that to slide through.
We have seventeen hundred square feet, one bedroom.
Right, yeah. Seventeen hundred square foot, one bedroom is probably not being used as a one bedroom.
Right, right. Or at least for just one or two people.
Right, okay.
Oh, one more question, sorry. For below market rate units, are, are the parkland requirement all waived? I just want to confirm.
That is correct. City's policy has been to waive park dedication requirements for below market rate units, and that's for the city's BMR manual and the housing element.
Or to consider the waivers.
Yes. So if, it's for a hundred percent, for BMR housing, they don't need to provide any dedication or pay any in lieu fee, right?
That has been the city's policy, yeah.
Yeah, and then if they have like fifteen percent BMR units, that fifteen percent units don't have to pay any of these fees.
That is correct.
Good.
And, and Chad, I'm sorry, city engineer, going back to the table, crossing out this ten plus, is it fair to say the city's practice has been to consider that an anomaly, and that the calculation would be based on the ten to twenty dwelling units per acre number?
That is correct.
And not that ten plus number? That the city has not been interpreting that its code to apply that?
That is correct.
That number. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if the city clerk would please conduct a reading, the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-one ninety-two.
Sure, this is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash two-one-nine-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, adopting the fourth addendum to the 2014 general plan final EIR, and amendments to chapter thirteen point zero eight and chapter eighteen point two-four of the municipal code to clarify standards for parkland dedications and fees in lieu thereof.
I move that ordinance number nineteen dash two-one-nine-two, be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof, with the following modifications. Number one, the two desk items described previously in section thirteen dot oh eight dot oh eight oh dot B dot three, and I don't have a section number for the other paragraph that you added.
I believe it's section three of the ordinance.
Section three of the, I, I was looking at the ordinance, I didn't see a, so-
In, in the, in the now, therefore.
Okay, and in section three of the, of the ordinance?
Yes.
It is section three?
So-
Or a new section three?
That's item seven, this is item eight. Here, I'll put it back on here.
Okay. Under, under section three of the, of the ordinance, in table, number two, in table thirteen dot oh eight dot oh five oh, strike the row indicating ten-plus dwelling units per acre. Number three, in section thirteen dot oh eight dot oh five oh, subsection F four, F as in frank, add quote, "in any horizontal dimension," end quote, after the term wide. And number four, in table thirteen dot oh eight dot oh eight oh, under mandatory element, add quote, "all dedicated land must be at least fifty feet wide in any horizontal dimension," end quote, to the end of that section. So that, those are the items in the motion, and I reiterate the request for a future nexus study tied to the size of the, the units.
Yeah.
Sorry, one more thing. The fifteen feet wide requirement should apply, fifty feet wide should apply to private open space, the turf area.
Right.
So that's under-
Yeah, I captured that.
You did, okay.
That's, uh-
I was, uh-
That's under thirteen dot oh eight dot oh eight oh, under mandatory element. That, that's the, the fourth item that, um-
But you mentioned that they park dedication on the fourth item.
There's, there were two amendments to that effect.
Right.
Okay.
I, I agree that both changes we talked about have been captured in Councilmember Paul's motion.
Okay.
All right, yeah, thanks. We ready for a second?
Yes, I made the motion.
Okay, I'll second. Let's vote.
Motion carries with stinks voting no.
Okay. Okay, we are on to item nine, consider an out-of-cycle community funding grant for West Valley Community Services. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Give me a second to pull it up. So, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Sharif, City Council Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services, here to present the item for you to consider an out-of-cycle community funding grant of five thousand dollars for West Valley Community Services. When we say out-of-cycle funding grant, what that means is our current community funding cycle process starts on February first, when we make applications available to anyone who may want to apply for a community funding grant. They have until March first to submit that application. Once those applications are submitted, they're reviewed by administrative services staff, basically just to make sure that the application has been completely filled out. Once that review is done, those applications are forwarded to the Parks and Rec Commission, who then reviews and ranks these, these applications, and then brings those recommendations forward to council as part of the budget. In June, council, so in May, council also hears those recommendations, and in June, as part of the final budget, they go ahead and finalize those recommendations as part of the adopted budget. The request before you this evening is, again, for West Valley Community Services for a total of five thousand dollars that would go toward their Gift of Hope program. And this program provides gift and food to homeless and low-income families living in the service area. These services are generally provided during the December holiday season. So before you tonight, we have two potential recommended actions. The first is to approve a community funding grant of five thousand dollars for West Valley Community Services Gift of Hope, Gift of Hope program. The second is to recommend that West Valley Community Services, or, so this is an or, you may recommend that West Valley Community Services apply for a community funding grant during the city's regular grant process. And that concludes my presentation. Available if you have any questions.
Okay, um, so, we established a process for these nonprofits. So, did they not anticipate this when they did their original proposal, or why are we considering the out-of-cycle? I mean, I know it's a worthy cause. I just have a hard time with violating the procedures that we established to avoid exactly this kind of thing.
Two members of council brought it onto the agenda during the, I forget the date, the noticed roles and responsibilities training.
Okay.
And my understanding is this is not a request initiated by West Valley Community Services.
Well, I, I would challenge that. So this came about during the poverty workshop that was put on by West Valley Community Services, and I participated. And afterwards, Josh from West Valley Community Services talked with me and said that they had a lot of need this year, and he said, would the city be able to help the holiday season? A lot of need, a lot of people are homeless, low-income families. Is it possible for the city to help in any way? And to me, that sounded like a compelling enough request to consider it. Again, we're not talking about some other type of activity. We're talking about need that's there today. As I interpret what I was told by Josh, the need that's there today for these holiday seasons, the number of people that are coming to them for help, and it sure seems to me that if we have enough in our budget, either the city council budget, the council and commission budget, that rather than wind up with excess, that just goes back in the bank. And so the city manager checked and found out that in the same period last year, the budget was significantly, in my view, significantly underspent. And to me, those two things together are enough for me to say, wow, I think we should do this for our community, and I think the community would support it. And we're here. Now we can decide.
Okay, I do, just did get two cards. So I'll take them out of order, because we have someone from West Valley Community Services here, Vanessa Escobar. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Vanessa Escobar, and I'm the Assistant Manager of Client Services. Thank you for giving West Valley Community Services the opportunity to apply for the community grant of Gift of Hope, for Gift of Hope. The Gift of Hope program was started more, started more than twenty years ago to combat the stress and hopelessness families living in poverty phase during the holidays, and replace it with a sense of hopefulness and possibility. The program provides gifts of clothing, small household items, toys, and food to homeless and low-income families living in our service area during the December holiday season. In addition to providing much-needed items to families struggling financially, it relieves the stress caused by the pressure to engage in holiday spending that low-income families cannot afford, and helps preserve household income that can be used on necessities like rent, utilities, transportation, and childcare. This year, we have three hundred and sixty households registered, more than nine hundred people total, and about a hundred of these households are Cupertino residents living at or below the two hundred percent of the federal poverty line. This is an overall increase in our program participation of twenty percent over, year over year. Items will be distributed to the Gift of Hope event on December fourteenth. Thank you so much for your kind consideration for our request.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have, unless anyone has questions. Okay, yeah, can you stay up here, so?
So, what's your expected, what was the budget last year for this program? And you said there is a twenty percent increase in the number of households this year. So what's the expected budget this year for the program?
For that question, we'll definitely come back to you. I am here to represent Josh and Sujatha, and I am, I'm not sure what the budget is, but we can definitely get back to you on that.
Um, okay.
That's great, but we're deciding tonight.
The application states a total budget for this program of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right, for this year, but what was it last year?
That it doesn't say, it just says for this year, it's twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so five thousand is about, like, like twenty percent, the, the increase. So we will be covering the increase, because there is an increase of home, probably homeless and families this year. So the funding, I suppose, would all be spent on gifts, not on any other operating cost, right?
It would be on gifts.
And I guess usually this funding is all covered by donation individually, or you do a fundraising drive?
So we do fundraise for this program when we're able to meet the need, but the support that the city will help us meet, will help us meet the increasing need and the requests that are coming in every day.
Hmm.
Okay, um, all right, thank you. I'll go on to the next speaker then. Janet Van Zorin, welcome.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening. I guess what my, what I'd like to say is there is a great need here in Cupertino for helping people who are homeless and near homeless. And I know that West Valley Services does apply for monies every year during the normal process, and usually they do get some funding. I think the need is much greater this year. It's not as anticipated, and, you know, why not? If we have the money there, and we know that the need is there, why would we not want to fulfill this need? That's my input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring it back to council. John, you spoke. How about Leon? Do you have anything?
Um, I actually have some comment. Um, I think one idea that I had was, but then Josh is not here, so I don't even know if this is practical. Because I think I would like the city fund to be, to go a longer way. So one idea was, the city provide five thousand dollars as like a matching fund, and the rest that we would encourage residents to donate, and we would match up to five thousand dollars. But then, since they are not doing a fundraising drive for this program, I'm not sure if this is applicable. And another thing I, I'd like to bring up is the community funding grant. It seems our program doesn't really require the organization to submit an annual report, or even give us, us itemized the budget on the actual spending. So I hope for next year, in the, the one that's starting in February, can we request to have more accountability for this one?
Okay.
Just a clarification. We do ask for the total budget of what they're asking for in their total budget, but we do not ask for an annual report. We also ask if they're getting funding from any other sources outside of the city of Cupertino as well.
Don't we have them sign a grant agreement that requires some reporting?
No, just the grant application.
Okay, council-
The reason I ask that is for El Camino Hospital, they give out millions dollars, tens of millions dollars of, of grant. And for this huge amount, they do- And for this huge amount, they do require itemized the budget for the grant request. And at the end, or even mid-year, they require any updated budget. At the end of the year, they require an update on the actual spending, so they know exactly where the money went. I don't think we have that practice. I hope that can change.
And I'm checking. I think we might have a grant agreement that requires some of that if people are awarded the money, but I'll have to double-check.
And so, they are required to give us a report for accountability?
Just have to double-check. We're having, we're remembering different things.
Thank you.
And just one fact for council consideration on the application for this particular amount. Number of individuals total served from this would be, is 800, and number of Cupertino residents is 200.
I would like to speak on this.
Sure.
So, you know, for a long time, we've had a process on how we fund nonprofits. And I realize that anybody at any time, any one of these agencies has needs, but we have a process for this, and we go through it once a year. And we're trying to stack and register and elicit these facts to make cogent decisions about which agencies we fund. I think that's the appropriate time for us to be doing this. This is about conducting a process. And if you think about it, what we're doing when we make these grants is we're taking money from our taxpayers. We're foregoing other things we could do with that money. Do we have unlimited money? No, right? So, this comes down to priority setting. And I think this is appropriately done through a process where we solicit applications. If, you know, if, if we do these helter-skelter, what's going to happen, John, is you and I and everybody else are going to start receiving all kinds of requests off-cycle from all kinds of really worthy folks. The point of doing it in one process at one time and evaluating all the requests together is to try to get some fairness and objectivity into the process. So, I'm, I'm struggling with this. I can't support it because it's just, you know, it's, it's, it's out of the process. And we, I think we need to be very thoughtful about how we expend taxpayer dollars. We, through our CDBG grants, right, our block grants, we give money to a whole number of agencies, including West Valley Community Services, to do good work. The county is in the business of providing social services, but we're a municipal government, and I think we have to be thoughtful about the process whereby we make these awards. Thanks.
And council member Paul.
I, I, I agree with council member Sinks, and I, I respect the, the process-oriented concerns. For me, it's, it actually cuts in the other direction, however. I mean, I think it's, it's not that the $5,000 is a relatively minimal amount. I think that, you know, if we could, if we could do this in a manner that made it very clear that thinking about the budget ahead of time in the appropriate time of the year is, is something that we would highly encourage. I, I wouldn't say, I would just foreclose the possibility of this ever happening in the future. But I, I, I would, I would say that there is a lot to be said for anticipating what might happen. At the same time, I have participated in the past in events in, in San Jose hosted by the labor unions where a number of families that just don't have the means are able to get, get gifts during the holiday season. And I, I see that. It makes a very substantial difference. And if we're looking at, you know, a, a significant amount of our own households in Cupertino, I mean, to, to me, it becomes a, a bit of a balancing factor. And for, for this, I would, I would say there are process-based concerns. I absolutely acknowledge them. And I, again, I would highly encourage if West Valley Community Services thought in the future, while there might be some anticipated added increases in needs at the end of the year, budget for more, because ultimately, that's something that's going to, you know, prevent this from becoming an issue later on in the, in, in the budgetary cycle. The other, the other item, if it turns out that we're not getting as granular of information with regard to these spending allocations, we certainly are stewards of the public's dollar, and it would be good to have that kind of detail, you know. I'm not saying detail every single expense, but, you know, just getting a sense of how this was spent. So, so it's, it's close. It, it certainly is, but it's also the season. It's the end of the year, and I, I think that as a, as a jurisdiction, I'd like to support the statement that, you know, we would be, you know, sympathetic to the, the conditions of, of some of our families. And then, yeah, I mean, the other part of it, I think, I, I'll just make a, a very quick comment. I, I've thought for a very long time that we should be taking some of our housing funding, BMR housing funding, and going towards rent assistance. But at the same time, there are ways of doing this in a legislative manner that have been brought up through our community in the last, you know, couple of weeks, that I'll, I'll be actually supporting, you know, consideration of later on in tonight's meeting for a, for a future action. But, you know, I, I think, again, this is, is a fairly minimal amount, and the impact will be quite high. It wasn't completely anticipatable, but in the future, hopefully, the, the very fine efforts of West Valley Community Services can take into account the possibility of needing a, a bit more. All right? Thanks.
Can I add something? Sorry. So, I think Cupertino doesn't have our own social service department. So, the only thing we have in our community that provides help to these families are West Valley Community Services. They are not a part of the city department, but they are providing this essential service that we are not providing. The city has actually revised budget mid-year to fund a million-dollar bike pedestrian project. That has been done. It's not like we've never updated the budget mid-year. And this is $5,000 for needy families and for, for West Valley Community Services. The $5,000 that they get for this program, they can spend the extra $5,000 for other homeless services, other services they provide for their clients. So, this is different from, no other nonprofit in our community will be making this kind of request, I think, because they are the, the, almost the only organization that's providing this service.
Okay. So, here's my feeling. I have given to the Gift of Hope I gave last year. This year, I did not, because instead, I was out last Friday giving care packages directly to the homeless in San Francisco and spent quite a bit on that. And like council member Sinks, I share, I'm hesitant because of, we, we established a process specifically to avoid this kind of coming back mid-year with, with requests. This is not, you know, I talked to Josh Salo about this already, and I said, oh, did something happen? Is this an emergency? Are you out of money? He said, no, no, no. This was not even something that he initiated. It was initiated at the Poverty Workshop, which I also attended, and it was actually, you know, on the part of councilman Willie, who asked if they needed extra assistance this year. On the other hand, I-
I disagree with that.
Okay.
I think you're incorrect.
Well, I, I'm just repeating what Josh said to me when I talked to him about this. On the other hand, it is not a lot of money. It's $5,000. I agree with council member Chow that I would have preferred something like matching funds, where, you know, we, we donate $5,000, but it has to be met by 5,000 additional donations by the community. We do have the opportunity in the next funding cycle to, you know, consider the $5,000 that we're giving tonight in future funding if this, if they have this 25, 20% increase in this program this year that was unanticipated. I think that's the key thing. If they had planned for the increase in the number of families needing the program, then the out-of-cycle grant would be totally inappropriate. But since they didn't plan for that, I don't know. It's, you know, I don't like the idea of these one-time things because we didn't give other nonprofits the opportunity to apply as well. But, you know, I think I'm willing to go along for this one time with the $5,000, though not, not with some unease at doing so.
I move that council approve a community funding grant of $5,000 for West Valley Community Services Gift of Hope Program for, for this season.
I second.
And the motion carries with Sinks voting no.
Okay. We're on, with no more oral communications, we're on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. John, do you have anything?
So, I attended councilman Paul's town hall meeting. I hope we, in the future, we can do more to advertise. I thought it was, you know, good material for the community, and I just think we need to be able to try and get more of the community to come, come to it. Interviewed by a Cupertino High student for an article about VAALCO. I believe it's going to be in their newspaper. I met again with Orrin Mahoney about the potential housing project on Mary Avenue. He, he gave me more of the background, that it was previously considered or proposed, but the council didn't feel inclined to go along with it. But times have changed, and hopefully, when we have our study session, we can hopefully make this a part of our work plan for going forward. And it would be extremely low-income for developmentally-challenged individuals, and I think it would be something for us to seriously consider. And that's it.
Okay.
Okay. So, on the 23rd of October, I attended an AYSO annual celebration in Kennedy Middle School. And I took this chance to ask the board members there, how is the turf condition in Cupertino field compared with other cities? They do agree that in Cupertino, we have the very best field. However, for them, they, for their AYSO, for their kids, they, they think a reasonable, reasonable quality of the field would be enough. So, I am wondering whether we are spending too much to keep our field at the very top quality, because at the, our two-by-two meeting with COSD, we are actually spending more than the amount of rent we get from this field. So, that's something we should consider in the future. And on the 22nd of October, oh, well, this is not really city-related, but I attended a conference talking about equity access for college admission. They are, there is a move in moving towards making SAT optional for UC admission. Many community members might be interested in this change. And on 21st of October, I attended the Businesswoman Monthly Luncheon hosted by the city. It's a monthly meeting, and I, I invited many people I know. They, people really like this group. However, we are also talking about how to make it more effective, so people can really connect before and after the luncheon, and we are working with Angela and Deb on improving that. And so, as for the future agenda item, we received an email request to inform us about a home match program, which match, the program that, the email mentioned is in Berkeley. They match graduate student and post-doc with senior citizens. So, they could, they help the senior citizens to do a matching and then form a rental agreement and what kind of help, so that they, they help each other. Either they need companionship or maybe minimal amount of housework. I thought this kind of program is interesting. And then, I looked it up, San Francisco and San Mateo, many other cities have this program, and they are not limited to graduate students. So, they do have this for low-income. But then, they do screening, so that there is, so there, any of the concerns about like potential abuse will be minimized. So, I hope the staff could consider, I, I, I looked at that it needs nonprofit to administer this program. But then, San Francisco City, for example, provides funding to, to, I guess, help the administration. It seems the city of Santa Clara also has a similar program. City provides some funding, but the nonprofit helps to do the matching. So, I hope we, for future, maybe next year's prior program. But I hope we don't start until July, though. Yeah. Okay. Another agenda is, okay, actually, this is a question. One of the work program item is to in, to include the extremely low-income percentage in the BMR requirement. I don't remember seeing that in our BMR mitigation access study. Is that included? Or did I?
I don't know about that particular question. I do know that the extremely low and very low, if I'm understanding your question, is part of our RENA requirement.
RENA requirement to require low-income, very low.
Very, right.
But not extremely low. So, the work program item was to add a requirement for certain percentage of extremely low. And maybe we can say 5% extremely low and 5% moderate, so they kind of balance out? So, that, there is no progress on that?
I think there's progress. I think it's staff work at the moment to try and change those and add it in. If it's a work program item, it's in progress.
Because I remember when the BMR access study was on the agenda, we didn't see that. I all of a sudden remember that.
Yeah. And, and that study was the feasibility study to determine what fees for BMR mitigation impacts would be paid to different, paid by different developments? That's different than, you know, what the requirements are for the-
Oh, we don't need feasibility study to see if 5% EOI is feasible or not.
I, I honestly don't know. I, I, I mean, I, I'm not into the details of that item, but-
Yeah. Could you give me an update?
My guess is that, that, that what was, went forward before was addressing a different issue than what is on the work program.
Could you give me an update on when you expect that to come back to the council or the planning commission? And next item is, someone brought up the easement over Wolf Road. I, I think a few months ago, three or four months ago, I spoke to city attorney and Diane, Assistant City, no, city manager-
Can I just point out, before you start talking, that this is an issue that's, that's before the judge in the VAALCO SB 35 litigation, and we will have a hearing on that and a ruling soon?
I believe my question is- I believe my question is, how, how is the easement recorded? What's the, so this has to do, it doesn't matter what's the, shouldn't we know? If we give someone an easement, what's allowed use? It's unclear.
I'm happy to talk to you about that.
I asked for that multiple times. And Diane said, the staff needs time to study and I need the council's consensus for the state. For, 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 can we put this on a future agenda to have a study session? Study item on the?
Sure, I'll, I'll be the, well.
Could you give us a chance for me to connect with Diane about your question and figure out what it was and get back to you? And then if we haven't answered it, we could consider whether to bring it forward.
I spoke to you also and I hit a stone wall a couple of times.
I apologize that if you feel like it wasn't answered. I think I need to go back and see what you've requested. And, and, yeah.
Okay, and another thing is someone, I think Lisa brought up.
I'm sorry, I have an early morning meeting. I'm going to take off because I don't have anything to add here. Okay, thank you.
So a study session on the 2019 housing bills or any bills that we need to be aware of, shouldn't we have a study or at least a report? I think.
I emailed a summary to the council a month or so ago. I'm, we've, we're working with staff on next steps to implement that. It's up to you all if you want to have a public discussion.
I would rather publish something on our website than have another study session. But, I mean, if there's a second person that wants a study session, that's fine too.
I guess for things that we don't actually implement, like the eviction standard, we don't have any anti eviction law, I would like to know what's in there. How would that impact our residents? So, okay. So we, we'll see if we have a report. And then one, so another speaker brought up an emergency anti eviction, emergency tenant protection measure. Do we want to consider that?
Yeah, I would support it at our, at our next meeting on the 17th. Well, I would support putting it on our agenda. I, I don't know how long staff would need in order to prepare it. I think that's the issue in terms of, you know.
Okay, I mean, can I comment on that? If we propose an ordinance at our next meeting, it wouldn't be in a, right. We'd have to enact it within.
And there are publication requirements also.
Right, I mean, I mean, here's the issue. The rent, the rent cap is retroactive till last March.
It's an eviction issue.
The eviction issue was not retroactive. So you've got some landlords in some cities saying, well, I'm just going to evict everyone, raise the rent, and then they can come back. But, so I, I'm not opposed to this, but, I mean, how much time is our council going to spend fixing poorly crafted state laws that?
I believe, I heard that the major adopted by other city is retroactive. So if Sunnyvale adopted something, maybe we should look tonight. They adopted something tonight. So is that, was that approved?
It's retro, what, so if somebody was evicted?
I don't know.
They, they get unevicted?
And, and can I just say that we shouldn't have too much discussion about this? Let's just decide whether to put it on the agenda or?
Right, we can put, I, I'd favor putting this on the next agenda.
But I also would like a kind of a status of how serious the problem is. If someone is facing eviction, where do they go for help? So that we even have some data, who is facing this situation? And do we have something on the website so that they know to go to, say, West Valley Community Services? Do we have that? If we don't, can we maybe put down an email blast to say, if you are facing this situation, here is where you can go for help? Maybe at least do that.
We could probably interface with WVCS and get a sense of, because they're, they're most directly connected to people that would be in need of that and, and to gauge whether this is actually an elevated problem in our community. I mean, the other source of relief that I know of is the courts. They, they do have some, you know, forms of, you know, legal, you know, legal assistance. But, I mean, I don't know of any formalized, you know, mechanism of support from the city of Cupertino.
Not from the city. I think there are multiple community groups who can help. But people facing this might not know. So if we can get some, this kind of, there, someone must have published something. We can just copy and make it widely available so people who needed it will see it.
And, and that was one of the issues we raised in the state law, that one thing the city could do is publicize this change in state law so people are aware of it.
So at, at the minimum, let's publicize, here are the resources for help.
And could I get clarity about this emergency measure? I mean, we could bring back at the next council a meeting or potentially just a study session about whether we think it's feasible to adopt the ordinance, whether we want to go forward with it and what that would entail? Or do you want staff to actually start looking into this? If it's feasible drafting it, doing the noticing, coming back for a first reading as soon as possible, which would not be the next meeting, but probably is, probably in January.
Then that would be.
January is too late. It's.
No, we're talking about an urgency ordinance to fill the gap between now and the end.
Yes. So, so I just wanted clarity if you're directing us to, to draft that ordinance, maybe bring it back, or if you want us to come back with more information for you to consider at the next meeting.
No, I just, I, I, I think you need to look into what the timetable would be. It's under 2.12.020, I think, under, under the ordinances section to, to see just precisely how long it would take. When ordinance is, well, I, I don't want, you know, legislated from the dais, but I think, we just need some guidance as to how long it would take.
If it's feasible to do it by the end of the year, you want us to bring it back on the 17th in actual urgency ordinance?
That's what I'm requesting.
Okay, but if it's not feasible, then not something that we do.
Right, yeah, proceed with the urgency ordinance. Now, I know in other cities, I know in Daly City where this has been an issue, people affected have shown up at the council meeting en masse to address this. The problem is we don't know in Cupertino if anyone has experienced a no cause eviction specifically because of this new state law.
So then if we bring something back on 17th and it's not retroactive, if we cannot make it retroactive, how, how effective is this?
Well, yeah, it may not be effective. I mean, I mean, that's, that's the issue we face. We're, you know, we're five people on a city council trying to fix a state law that was extremely poorly written. And, you know, unfortunately, I don't know how much power we have to do that in the time we have remaining in this year. I mean, an urgency ordinance is fine. You know, I'm not sure what the effect it's going to have. I wish, I wish that law had been written in a better way, that this problem had not, not occurred. It almost seems to, there's no way that this could not have been foreseen by the authors of the law. I mean, they made one thing retroactive, they made the eviction not retroactive. So of course they knew that there would be unscrupulous, or, I would, they may not all be unscrupulous property owners that would take advantage of the way they wrote the law. So we can do the urgency ordinance, you know, maybe it'll help a few people, but it's not going to solve the world's problems.
At least let's broadcast the resources available for people who need help. And sorry, last item, the small business center that's on our work program. And I asked Angela in the Economic Development Committee meeting, or a little after that, what happened? Because it was a work program from last year. And this year I haven't seen progress. She said, all they need is a space. The, there are consultants who would come in for free to give consulting service for small business. They just need space for them to come in. So I was wondering, do we have any progress on that? I was proposing maybe the city can make a conference room available for four, four hours a week on the off-peak time, if that's at all possible.
We'll check into it.
So could you, yeah, give an update on, this is also our, this year's work program? And I don't know if we are making any progress. Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll go next. So for future agenda items, I know Rod has left, but I think in terms of rooftop public parks, it is something we should look into in the future. Not exclude them completely, but have standards in place on when they would be acceptable. And all the way to construction standards. And because it is true, there, there are some good rooftop parks in the country. And they're not 20 stories in the air, but it's possible that we could craft something. We should have a study session on the Faster Bay Area proposal. I've already gotten several emails on this. So we may want to take a position on, on that proposal. Also, we should take a position on PG&E and the proposal by Mayor Licardo that it become something like the Sacramento Municipal Utilities District. The emergency eviction ordinance was already mentioned. And the study session on easements, if, if the response from the staff is not sufficient to satisfy Councilmember Chow and myself, I would like some clarification on that as well. So those are my future agenda items. Thank you. Darcy?
Well, as stated previously, I held a town hall on November 20th. I want to thank Councilmembers Chow and Willie for initiating that process for our outreach to the community. Thought it went well. I tried to do something a little bit different and have a roundtable type of event an hour before that. Although it turned out to be kind of two roundtables, as Councilmember Willie found out. You know, I thought, I thought it was actually a pretty reasonably attended, you know, event, given the, the timing of it, about, you know, roughly a week before Thanksgiving. But, you know, for the most part, people were focused on the library expansion, which was something that had been fully funded the night before. And it was, you know, a town hall that kind of focused on quality of life issues and trying to think about what we can be doing to have some park equity, you know, throughout the city as well as the library space expanded and, and, you know, and possibly other ideas as to how we can be improving our, our access to, you know, the, the government mechanisms. So I was really grateful for our city manager, in addition to Councilmember Willie being there. We had a couple of department heads as well, so it was very accessible. During the roundtable beforehand, it was a very interesting discussion with regard to a couple of topics. There was one person who came in and wanted to talk about the permissibility of flying drones within our city parks. And he had looked up the municipal code and it actually stated that there are certain areas where you could fly those types of, you know, those types of, I guess, aircraft. But, but they had to be designated within our city parks, but there was actually no designation. So he was wondering about that as a follow-up. There was a really interesting presentation from a group of students with regard to the ideas for what we could be doing with the empty ponds in Memorial Park. And I, I would expect that, you know, beyond bocci-boc courts or, you know, cement ping pong tables, we also probably have some pretty substantial and far-ranging, long-term ideas coming up in our Parks and Rec Master Plan, which I think is coming back to us in either late January or early February. On the 26th, I met with Tim McRae of Silicon Valley Leadership Group. And I, I'm sure he's told me this over the years, but Tim is actually, he's the energy liaison for SVLG. But he actually is the employee at that organization assigned to Cupertino. I, I think, you know, with regard to our varying opinions, you know, and very rightfully so, right? I mean, there are a lot of business interests that are represented there. And, you know, when it comes to having a major bond measure or a potential sales tax, I mean, they, they seem to have a lot of involvement in, in those types of issues. I, I think it really does behoove us to, you know, establish a good rapport. And I think I would, I would recommend, you know, you know, sitting down and talking with Tim. I think he's pretty neutral in, in terms of the topicality and its energy policy that he focuses upon. So, yeah, I, I would commend my fellow council members to, you know, perhaps, you know, nurturing that relationship through that contact. Outside of that, I absolutely do, you know, support the idea of looking into an urgency ordinance as a result of, I believe it was AB 1482. Because, you know, we, we do have a lot of rental pressures in the area. And this is actually not a rent control device. This is really something that was about rent gouging. And so to the extent that there's, you know, particular porosity, I think it also sends a, a good message to the state that, you know, look, as a jurisdiction, we're not, we're not about shutting the doors, you know. It, it's, it's really a matter of, you know, trying to take some logical approaches. If they're going to open the door and there's some, 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 some holes to fill, then, you know, I think it's, you know, compassionate and logical that we look into it. So I thank my fellow council members for that support. There is an upcoming event that I think the community should be aware of. Ever since the second Apple campus, Apple Park opened up in 2017, was it? Or 16? It's been a couple of years now. It hasn't actually opened up to the public, but members of our community are going to be invited to an open house if they haven't already. And that'll be on December 14th. That's a Saturday, so mark your calendars for that. Hopefully, we'll, you know, be able to see each other, you know, around the, the grounds there. It's a very interesting facility. Oh, and then next Monday, the, the county is actually having a listening tour among the various cities in the county about LGBTQ issues. They've reached out to me and asked me to give a couple of minutes of remarks and invited me to stay here in Community Hall. I believe it's going to be Monday, next Monday, the, the 9th, is it? From 6:30 to 8:30 right here in Community Hall. And perhaps the mayor is.
Right, yeah, they invited me. I agreed to attend.
Excellent. So, yeah, I, I think it's, it's a good way of reaching out to the, you know, various facets.
I responded, I'll attend too, so we, oh, someone else hosted it, so we can all attend, right?
Yeah, I think that, that policy was clarified with regard to, right? So, and it's a listening, it's a listening tour, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, again, next Monday at 6:30 here. Thanks.
So I'm not sure that the Apple Open House, that every resident is getting invited. I thought they were starting something with residents closest to the campus first. So I don't, everyone get their hopes up of getting, getting an invitation?
Actually, and it's kind of a pilot. It's, it, I can't make any promises, of course, on behalf of Apple, but the way they're organizing is pretty smart. They're listening to the community members about traffic created from their really big, you know, events. So they're trying to manage it and actually invite the folks really closely affected by their campus build first, which is kind of nice, I think. So, and they're trying to size it to the friends and family one they just did a couple of months ago. It's about the same size so that it can get practiced at it. They haven't kind of done that before. So that's how it's going to go. And I, I thought that was kind of a nice, nice thing to do for the neighborhoods closely affected by that.
Right, and it's not just Cupertino. There's Santa Clara and Sunnyvale as well.
A little bit, mm-hmm. I do have a staff report to.
Great, okay.
So sorry, one comment about the, the state bill on rent, rent gouging. So I think Connie said it actually applies to single-family homes that are owned by corporations. So.
Right. I think it, I think they have to have a certain number of homes that they own before it applies. Is that the case? I can't recall. Yeah.
So I guess I'm wondering whether our residents need information, um, like, I think residents probably wouldn't know that the law is retroactive. So some piece, some land owner, some property owner might try to raise rent before the end of the year, and they violate the law. They might get sued. So I wonder, this kind of information for land owners, for for property owners, rental owners, on what not to do might be important, too, if we can find that information to share.
It might not even be a bad idea to work with our our local state representatives to try to get some outreach as well. I'm sure that they would have some resources, and after all, it's the state law.
Right, it is, right. Yeah, it is a state law. I would think that, you know, property owners that own a lot of rentals would be aware, well aware of this, because it's been highly publicized by, like, the California Apartment Association. I'm not, and for individual homeowners renting out a single home or townhouse, it doesn't apply. But if, right, I seem to recall that if, for corporate owned housing, over a certain number of units, it does apply.
And I think the brief comment has been made to the city manager who will look into it now.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm concerned about homeowners who maybe rent one room.
Noticed.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Tab, I have a status update I'd like to give.
Oh, right, okay, go.
Okay.
So as promised from the last announcement I made from the demolition activity on the Valco property from, I forget which date it was, but several weeks ago, last Wednesday, November 27th, we did receive all completed documents we required. And so we issued the temporary encroachment permits for the demolition activity specifically. The contractor notified the city that there would be no demolition activities during the holidays, so there wasn't any. On December 2nd, Monday, we sent, the city sent a letter from the city building official to the property owner contractor stating that demolition activities could resume. I have forwarded almost all of those documents to the council, but they are all posted on our website currently. The city inspector will be on site during those demolition activities. We have, we're almost there on the full time contract an inspector had agreed to be hired by the city and paid for by the property owner, and they could be on board as soon as this Thursday, December 5th. Today, December 3rd, there was some cleanup activity. If folks looked at the site, there was still some clean act, cleanup activity going on, some taking down of some smaller structures inside the building on the backside of the property, nowhere near the fence line, some fence moving in preparation. And for the temporary, via the temporary encroachment permits. And then the contractor notified the city they will resume demolition activity as early as tomorrow morning, December 4th, sometime tomorrow morning. The other thing that's still in progress is the structural engineer, independent structural engineer that city would hire and that the property owner would pay for to reassess the stability of the pedestrian bridge. However, I would say, just for everybody's, at least temporary comfort, the bridge is on its own separate foundation. So none of the support really is attached to either the west side buildings that are not there anymore, or the east side buildings that's currently attached. So there, it's, but we are bringing in a structural engineer to look at it. And that's my update for for now.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we are ready to adjourn.